...of the June twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen regular meetings. So, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Ms. Wurra?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
And we have a couple of presentations. Mr. Mark Ames. Ms. Ames?
Welcome to the...
You have the floor.
I have the floor. Don't you sit down?
You can sit down.
Right, I would like to sit down. Good evening, everybody. Several months ago, I was contacted by the superintendent and Ryan about doing a technology audit in the district. And I think the idea of the audit was to look at discovery of technology and where technology and integration to the curriculum actually exists or does not exist. Through the past several months, we've interviewed fifteen, twenty staff members, expected the current technology you have in the district, and looked at correlation with technology to the instructional process. I think, and I'm not going to give a long, I've got a long report, I don't want to get into details of that, but I think the overall theme was there's a volume, quite a volume of technology in the district. And I had never heard whether it wasn't, there was a lack of technology. Technology could be there, but there are different operating systems and all those things, and there's a discrepancy there maybe, but what works well and what doesn't work well. Of course, everybody always wants new and proven, the greatest items. There's a lot of good things as well. I heard a lot of good comments about trying to keep up the twenty-first century productivity tools, Microsoft Office three sixty-five. Heard a lot of good things about that. Also heard negative things, but you're always going to hear that. I've done audits, actually, all over the country, and there's always, there's always had the good and the bad. That's not uncommon. I think you're a little bit ahead of the curve in that. But the other item that I did hear, interesting concerns were where is this district moving towards one-to-one, or one-to-one type technology, device-driven student? What exactly is, where are we headed with that? Because that seems to be an interest, because we know all students, we all carry these devices, students carry two or three of these devices. In a day, it's not uncommon for three to four devices to be added each student. So, is the infrastructure you currently have for wires currently able to handle that? And I think that's what, those are the questions, that was one of the questions that were raised. I heard a lot of comments about integration of technology to the curriculum. There seemed to be somewhat of a disconnect there. There seemed to be technology, and there seemed to be instructional and curriculum, but to tie the two together. I know that question was raised by several staff members on multiple different occasions because they saw a real disconnect there. And I think it's probably not any one individual's problem, more than likely, the lack of maybe a structure at a, an engaged technology-type committee that has engagement and instruction in the curriculum and trying to align the two together. Today, we look at technology, and we talk about the cloud, we talk Microsoft Office, Google Docs, everything's in this so-called, whatever this cloud thing is. So, you have to think about your entire structure. Maybe one thing the district can look at would be a managed-type service structure, where your services are provided by a service agency or a cloud providers. I don't want to say cloud visioning providers, that may mean different things to different people, but somebody that manages services for you. So, that takes the burden off the district. And also, you also can look at federal-type concepts, like e-rate, those types of services to offset the district's general fund costs for the services and get federal dollars to reimburse the district. So, that, those are things you might want to look at in the future to help offset current structure, you know, offset current costs. One of the other overlying themes I heard quite a few other times was, are we meeting the needs of the students with technology? And only you, Mr. Dr. Burke, Mr. Roll, can answer that question. I don't know, but, you know, that question came out by teachers, are we really meeting the needs? Because of these devices, that really drives the mark a lot higher. So, you've got, so, I think there's a question, and maybe that's also good back to this, a group that works together, technology, instruction, to help design what technology needs to be for the students. Because I think there's, it's a high mark to reach today. What do we need to do to meet the needs of our students? The other overlying thing that was really loud and clear, professional development. Professional development in technology and integration of technology with the curriculum. Those, that theme was heard loud and clear and repeated. Every, almost every teacher in every building I spoke to said the same thing. We have technology, but we're not using it to full, full possibilities, even off these five productivity tools. We're not using all the resources that are available. And maybe if we use all the resources, we wouldn't want to use the other provisioning docs, like Google Docs, provisioning the items that are available. So, that was certainly, that theme that needs to be addressed by the district. I talked about creative ways for many services and really consider ways to drive the technology differently nowadays today, because there seems to be an overlying theme where technology is driven by technology people, but it's not driven by the instruction. So, there's a true disconnect there. And that's not uncommon. You're not, you're not an isolated instance. I see that in districts all over the state and all over the countries I've worked with, the same thing. There is a disconnect. So, assuming you can drive those two together, it'll be better for the district moving forward. That's kind of the overlying theme, the large document. I don't want to drag out your board, I mean, all the details, I don't think that's important. Do you have any questions on any of those items? I'd be glad to answer those. But that's, that's kind of where the overall theme is going right now.
And really, you know, Mark's been up with us several different times over the last three months. This isn't, this isn't a one-shot deal. It's a plan, putting pieces together to help us with both short-term and long-term planning. Very excited to hear the ideas that Mark brings to the table, to really put the curriculum on the forefront, as opposed to, as he said, letting technology drive our curriculum needs. We need to have curriculum drive our technology needs. And that's an important marriage that, that, you know, Mr. Henderson has been involved in one of the principles, and so we're going to team the bill on that. Not going to be, the study sits on the shelf, we really need to utilize the study. Listen to what our staff or our students say that they need, and really try to put professional development in place to provide those necessary tools. We've got lots of devices. Are we fully utilizing those devices is the big question.
For example, the district's working right now, I'm not kidding, at the village. We did, it's very similar, very similar audit. And out of that, we've, this year, they're embarking on, and back in six months, they 've embarked on a hybrid learning project. It comes as technology, but technology is not the central theme of it. And it's more like, we talked, it's not a sub-classroom, not rotational method, but it's a combination of all of those items you put together. So, they're taking, the whole middle schools is going into a hybrid model. And it was interesting, they were a Windows district and Chromebook district. So, I went to the point where we started the process, we're going to be the teachers, and I said, what do you want? What do you want to do to make this project successful? They went to a MacBook, iOS, and iPads. So, they're looking away, so, because what they found, I went to find the curriculum components to provide the instructional, the instructional objects, they found there was more available free on the Apple side. Now, I mean, the difference, that was what they found. So, they kind of switched. You can do that, you can mix that, but there, that's a situation where the sort of true idea or concept of where the instructional materials drove the technology. Because originally, they were, they said, we'll buy a little bit more Chromebooks and so, and Chrome devices and management Chrome. Well, I interviewed them, so we can't find really the free objects we want to use for instructions, for our instructional endeavors. We want to use the Apple devices. And I'm not supporting one device or the other, I couldn't care less. But it really changed, and also now, we've got fourteen teachers extremely engaged in the process and really excited about upcoming year. And it's not easy. I mean, these teachers are going through a lot of professional development, they spent their summer working, getting ready for it. So, it's kind of exciting to see what happens there. So, when you switch it, they put the classroom, switch where the teachers are driving it, it's amazing how much involvement and excitement is being generated. And they're driving the rest of the district now.
You know, it's interesting, as we expanded the educational objectives program to include forty-six new elective classes online that we know has generated great interest from our students. Our staff is starting to question or ask a lot of questions and be involved in, hey, what does this online curriculum look like? And I think that those two pieces have driven the teachers' interest to learn about, not necessarily changing their classroom completely into an online class, but using the resources that come and picking and choosing what can benefit the traditional classroom that they've learned from overseeing an online class. You know, and we're really hoping that that continues to grow. You know, we have a hundred and two course requests that are bringing their online course requests, and we're from, what, eight to twenty kids or seventeen kids per period, taking online classes every period of the day. All those kids are going to be overseen by a teacher manner, or a teacher record that's going to immediately watch their progress and provide help and resources to those kids. So, it's, I think, I'm excited about the hundred and fifty devices coming into our district here this next week and how that's going to grow, so.
And I think, Mark, from my seat, and I'm encouraged to hear from your reports, that the teachers are saying, how is this technology, is this technology serving the needs of the students? And we're approaching it from that direction, as I know, working with Dr. Burke and Mr. Roll and their leadership capacity, that, they're of that mindset too. So, I think that the time is now for us to marry those two things, as you mentioned.
Absolutely. It was loud and clear from your teachers. It was loud and clear. They really want that, to be driven in that direction that way. And I think it's time. I think it's an evolution. It's not that you did anything wrong, it's not that the other district did anything wrong. I think it's a process. Over the last six, eight years, technology and availability of technology and this cloud provisioning thing, all those things are really starting to blossom. And so, the ability to do those, drive things and drive instructional objects to be the cloud provisioning providers is now, is there. So, now is the time really to attack that, especially if you have teachers excited about doing that.
As a former teacher, I would say it's one of the most exciting parts, but yet, I think it's going to be one of the most frustrating parts, because when you've got teachers that have twenty-five-plus years' experience, who didn't grow up with computers and all this technology, and get overwhelmed quite quickly, compared to those coming out of college within the last five to eight years that know it all, it's, you often feel, as a veteran teacher, I often felt inferior because, you know, I had a smart board in my room. Well, thank God the kids knew what to do, because, you know, for a long time, I wasn't quite sure. I learned more from the kids than I taught from them. But I was willing to learn and wanted to, but yet, it was just totally overwhelming at times, because there was so much, it changed so fast, and it was all dictated on time. You know, I would spend hours planning this lesson, go to the computer lab, couldn't get on site, or something went wrong, you know. Oh, my God, you know. So, I think it is exciting, but I think it's going to be, it's going to still be a frustration until we're more all on a level.
It's not, it's not easy. There's that, you know, you have access to sites and restrictive issues and nothing. You have to work through those issues, but I think what you get, as you get over that and determine that, you know, also, I'll be one, and I'll preach it, you probably, and I know Ryan's heard me say this before, I don't believe in internet filtering. You know, we all went to school, you guys have been administrators for several years, my father's a superintendent. You know, we got discipline, we looked like that playboys or playgirls, whatever was in school, you know, I said, same thing with the internet. Please it yourself. I mean, you can do that. And I think, less restrictive, because this, I hear that so often from teachers saying, I try to go to instructional office site, and I can't access it. And it's everywhere, it's not just here. And, no, take it away. You know, teachers, most people, ninety-five, ninety percent, ninety-nine percent of people are not going to use it. You know, take care of those users, and you move forward.
But you've got to think, you know, maybe five, even ten years ago, they didn't have phones to get access to the internet. Now, every kid has a phone, they can, they get past our filter every single day, every single second.
You can't stop it.
If they wanted to get something, they're going to go through our phone, they're not going to go through our computer.
Sure. Exactly right. Anyhow.
On the business side, there's a lot of benefits financially because we haven't invested a tremendous amount of resources in the wrong areas. We're going to hopefully meld the two of these together, make the right decisions for the long term, versus throw money at a hot solution that maybe the teachers don't want to develop. Then we're zigzagging out of a half million dollar strategy in three or four years. So, it's, that's kind of what drive, drove my interest in this whole process, because as we look at upgrade cycles and so forth, what are we doing that's in the best interest and cost of benefit as well. Well, I agree with the filtering issue. The one thing I have heard from teachers over the years is just that, you got a lesson plan ready to go, they can do it at home, they come to school, and for a lot of sites, for no apparent reason, it shouldn't be filtered, so.
I'm not saying, open everything, open the world up, but you know, you've got to open it up, so, because to some extent, because if you don't, that exactly, that happens, and that become, that's a low issue, but that becomes, you've got to throw that, and then this would become an overwhelming problem. Also, technology doesn't work in the district. It's not, it's nothing to do with technology, it's a district, it's a restrictive issue that was put in place, basically, because they thought it was necessary. It's not necessary. You know, Dr. Burke, Mr. Roll, we're hired to do that, take care of that job. Let them take care of that job.
And teachers are there to supervise.
That's right. They supervise. Teachers do a great jobs, except for me.
Another question that I have is, obviously, IT is a growing career field and choice for students. Have you been involved with districts that have involved students in the maintenance and troubleshooting and that?
Absolutely. Yeah, a lot of districts have taken that, because you can find good students to help with that process and engage them. I've worked with Zaneville City for years, we brought students in from the local tech university, high university, they came as interns, unpaid interns, they got credit, they worked in the district. You get four or five P kids, and they were, and they were good kids. You interview them, they pass the BCI checks, and they're in classrooms, working, and it becomes a way to offset costs for your district.
And give them a good experience as well.
Absolutely. And universities, colleges love to do that. It's great internship. And most of you can find good kids. A lot of times, it was interesting, you could find kids that went to school in your district, going back and doing that. And then they know the district, and not them know the teachers, and they know the way, where things are in the district, which is a big help. Absolutely, you can do that.
I'd be very supportive of that.
So, that's the synopsis. I'm trying to keep a long report short.
And there is, Mark does have a detailed plan that he'll share with us that we'll be able to pass on to the board. But the main piece that I invited him here today for is to update you on where we stand with the study, and then we'll be able to provide some help and support with the transition of Brian's position. So, some ideas that we can consider there, because the last rule I want to have happen is teachers show up over the next two, three weeks and they start to operate, so. And as we all know, there's been a tremendous amount of duties that have accumulated on Brian's plate. And when he came to the district thirteen years ago, you know, we may have had two hundred devices, we're now pushing close to a thousand. Back when he came to the district thirteen years ago, we had no security cameras. He's responsible for security cameras. We didn't have door entrance. We didn't have programs for security and the computer codes for the copers. I mean, just everything kind of continued to pile on. And then you throw in, now we have wireless devices, how that's in the networking, the new park assessments are coming up in the spring, and the security that goes along with that, and pressures that come along. So, there's lots of irons in the fire, and Brian has been a tremendous resource, and it's going to be a huge long start for the district. But what can we do to divvy up those duties somehow and not necessarily put all of the weight on one person's shoulders, that we can manage some, some of the programs can be outsourced through a management system, but we still need a quality person with boots on the ground in our district that can take care of the teacher issues as they come up. That's very critical. So, we spent a lot of time in the last two weeks looking at different options, and we've got a plan, I think, to share with you tonight, that we can start to have that conversation. So, Mark, appreciate your time. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Ms. Pennington.
Thank you, President Murdaugh, members of the board, superintendent, administrators. Per Senate Bill two-ten, we're required to report to the board if we're compliant with the competitive food standards for food service for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. And for me, that the food service part of it was a hundred percent compliant, and the elementary fundraisers were a hundred percent compliant. The high school will go ninety-eight point five percent. It wasn't that they were selling food, it should have been handed out at the end of the school day, but some of it was handed out during the school day, donut sales, that needed to happen at the end of the school day. It happened once, so, a lot of, that's very good. So, that's the report. But I also, in front of you, there should be, from the HUD Department of Ed, nutrition requirements for school, beverages sold during the regular school day throughout the school campus. There was a comparison on the several pages between what Senate Bill two-ten is and then what the USDA's Mark Snack ruling is. That's an interim ruling right now, but, and they were still taking comments throughout the school year, so they may change things throughout the school year also. One of the big differences, the Senate Bill two-ten said that we, they regulated what we could sell during the school day, and that included fundraisers during the regular school day, which if you have tutoring before or after school, that included your school day. Now, under USDA, it starts at midnight the night before and runs thirty minutes after the end of the school day. So, you have to be cautious in, you know, what we can do with that. And this does include fundraisers. And you can go through it in detail. I'm still sifting through things and trying to find items that are compliant to sell to our students. The biggest impact will probably be our middle school students. They've really come down with Senate Bill two-ten, I was able to sell the same thing as high school to middle school, because the majority of their enrollment is high school students. Well, of course, I asked the question at one of the meetings, and they said, no, six, seven, eight, you have to follow these guidelines, and nine through twelve, you have to follow these guidelines. So, basically, like for beverages, for instance, I can only sell juice, milk, and water, plain water, not flavored water, to middle school kids. High school kids, I can sell what we've sold in the past, the Gatorade, flavored water. They even say we can sell diet pop. But because of Senate Bill two-ten, I can't do that, unfortunately. Same with caffeine. We can, nine through twelve can have caffeine. I can sell coffee now to them. So, there's still, we're still getting guidelines from ODE and clarifications of what we can and cannot do with the two laws. And I did speak with the governor's office when they came down, and I said, you need to get rid of the competitive food part under Senate Bill two-ten, because it's just too confusing for many food service operators and the state. Any questions?
I'm a long way from Hamburg, Virginia. That was good stuff.
I appreciate Lori's leadership in this category. I would say that it's one thing for school districts to verbally say or pass board policy that they're following things, it's another thing to have confidence that what's being served in our classrooms is following the standards that are set. And while we went through a dip a year ago with some of our sales because of the major changes that occurred, we seen those numbers pick back up this year, and I credit Lori and her staff for providing a quality lunch program, breakfast program, dinner program for our, for our kids. So, the summer program's been off the charts this summer. So, that's a really kind of a moneymaker for our, for our district and for the food service program. So, there's obviously a need out there for summer lunches, and thanks to Lori and her staff for providing that and for our community.
All right. Moving on, can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's financial report dated June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen?
Support.
Arm wrestle. All right. Good evening. I have, I guess, three items tonight. I'll try to keep it somewhat brief for you. Since our meeting was so late in June, we've kind of updated on the debt suspending the district phase for the year. Mr. Kim and I have been proactive on that, continue to look for ways to creatively address that issue, one of those being attrition when staff leaves, examining staffing levels, working with principals. I know they don't like to discuss that, but we've taken a stance, I don't want to say it's not essential, because every position is essential, but if someone is retiring or leaving the district, do we have to fill it and then risk laying someone off or costing a job down the road? So, Mr. Kim has been very diligent, and those analysis, the building principals have been great with that information, and we've begun to take steps to be surgical with those reductions, if you will, to kind of help stem the tide of those deficits and maximize longevity of the cash that we have available in the general fund.
And just to chime in there, Mr. Burke, this year will be three less teachers than there were last year, and they're all coming from the elementary that we're not replacing. Plus, we added a preschool unit, so really, we're, you know, four different than previous year. So, it was a, you know, we do take a close look at those numbers. I do still feel that we have appropriate class sizes. Most of them range from sixteen to seven, or seventeen per class, at the most highest we may be touching twenty. So, I do think there's still appropriate-sized classes. The unfortunate pieces, we're continuing to see our special ed numbers grow, even though our overall enrollment's dehigh. So, there's stipulations about having certain number of case loads, seven kids per special ed teacher. And so, the unknown, and despite the, we're absorbing those three positions, if we have a huge number of kids being identified over the first three, four months of school, we may need to add a special ed staff member towards the middle of the year. But I didn't want to add it now, if we can go half a year without that position. So, and really, it's just playing it by year, and as kids start to go through the RTI process and they do, and the interventions don't close that gap, there may be some kids getting identified and push us over that number. So, stay in compliance, we may have to post a position over the way through the year. But right now, we're going to go try and absorb those three.
Yeah, it's a nice surgical approach versus a frog bait, just walk up for three or four years. Second item, I was rather disappointed, last month's meeting, I didn't think the solar project was going to end up coming together. Was pleasantly surprised, when everybody from Solar Planet got back from vacation, they did decide to go ahead and purchase the circuit grid with an ADP, thirty-five thousand dollar plus minus expenditure. That has been ordered, ADPs waiting on the arrival of that, then the construction process will begin in earnest to that project up around. So, positive news there on that front. The second item, Mr. Brown and I continue to work on the House Bill two-sixty-four project. Most likely, next month, going to have some final figures and resolution for approval. This is going to encompass LED lighting outside, LED lighting in gymnasiums. We're looking at including the annex windows, recommissioning of the elementary school building and various HVAC areas. We are also able to include, we've talked about these controllers, the thermostats in the rooms that go bad, and they're nineteen hundred bucks apiece. Carrier has an update to that, of course, and it was going to be about thirty thousand dollars per building, plus some additional expenses for running wire and Jabe's going to incur and do a lot of that himself to save labor. We can include that into the scope of the project because of some of the savings we're going to recognize on the lighting. So, really trying to tighten down the scope of what we're going to do, get away from some of the mechanical aspects. They had some items that would save us some funds, but they were more mechanical in nature, and I thought, gosh, that's just wear and tear, that in three or four years could break down and be replaced, so does the savings really justify it? So, we're looking at the big-ticket items, the things, annex windows, et cetera, that we know we're going to have to outweigh some capital for anyways, so we might as well wrap it into this project, finance it out, have energy savings offset those payments every year. So, that's where we're heading with that. And that concludes my report. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Weyrath?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheefer?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
There is no agenda?
No.
Okay. Moving on, committee reports. We will bypass Mr. Stone. Hopefully, he's doing, getting better. And on to athletics.
Good evening. Well, the fall season is getting ready to kick off here, and it's going to be our main voyage into the N-10. And I know we're looking forward to it. It's going to be very competitive, we know. And with that, we complete drug testing for student athletes. Initial testing was completed, and the makeup was just recently completed for those who weren't able to be at the first. Some athletic events coming up here shortly. We know that, let's see, tonight midnight, Redmond are going to take advantage of their first practice just after 12:00 midnight?
Yes, they are.
You're going to be out there with them?
Yes, I am.
Couple other events coming up. The Elks 156 Golf Invitational is going to be August 11th. And I know in the past, the board has been a sponsor personally of that, and I appreciate if we continue to do that again this year. I'll take up a collection after the meeting for those, those who participate. The fall sports pictures will be August 13th. Our first varsity football game at home will be August 29th. And before that, I think on August 20th, we're having a meet the team.
After the district open houses?
Yes. And I'll probably have a little bit more to say on that, Mr. Kim. And the end of the month, August 30th, the Elks will be having an annual cross-country invitational at the Bear Grind. So, a lot of things coming up as we get ready for the fall sports season. And we want to wish our student athletes and coaches the best. And I see we handed out this Redmond Football 2014, yes, win the day, wear proudly. And I just want to say, on a personal basis, I speak for the board, I guess, on this, but just how proud we are as a group to see the ongoing improvements that we continue to make for our facilities, especially our athletic facilities, as we continue to provide our student athletes, coaches, and our Redmond family the best facilities we financially can afford. So, I think we continue to do that, and things are looking very nice. So, and with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Weyrath.
And I have nothing to add to what done, Mr. Sheefer. And I agreed on it. Best of luck to all our fall sports athletes and coaches. Guess we'll see what happens in a few weeks. Come on.
Well, just a comment on that. The first home game is actually September 5th. God is away, that is the first game. Oh, it's, no problem. Kind of piggybacking on the facilities, we had roughly 50 teams come to our facility over the last two Saturdays and nothing but compliments about the facilities, the way the tournaments were run for the 7-on-7. And, you know, from the concession stands to the facilities, to the volunteers, it was very well run. And you just get glowing remarks from those teams and coaches that bring their kids to the facility. So, that's a tribute to everybody that takes care of that. Very well done. And we can move on past Pioneer and Dr. Johnson.
We probably got an email today from OSBA, and apparently there's a piece of legislation to basically end or block what's known as common core in Ohio. And I think personally, that'd be a real shame because I know ODE and the local districts put a lot of time and effort into that. It's become a real, you know, partisan problem. We have an update on the state report card, and I don't know if there'll be any further updates on that, but.
Yeah, most of our data has already been cleared through the clearinghouse. We've punched the numbers, waiting on the local report card to be released from the state, which will be in August. So, once we have those official report cards, we'll pass out the report cards into a presentation. Probably will be at our August meeting to have that updated. concludes my report.
All right, and on to me for wellness. I don't believe, we've not had a meeting, excuse me, not had a meeting. So, I really have nothing to report unless you have something, you mentioned something about donuts, but I'm not sure what that was all about.
Those are all right.
1201 donuts and coffee. All right, well, we will move on to superintendent's reports. President Murrah, members of board, hot off the press, I have our smoke signals here. They'll be in the mail to our community. And I apologize, administrative team, I don't have enough copies of those, but they'll be hitting the schools here soon. Also, I want to pass out a couple of things I want to draw your attention to, the smoke signals. And I appreciate Chris Stone's help in organizing and putting this together. We've taken a little bit of a different approach in the front cover. It used to have an ugly mug of the superintendent and a boring message on the front. That's not what we're about, we're about the kids. So, we moved the colored photos. And the interesting pieces, we picked the photos. I pride ourselves and our school district prides in offering educational options beyond the classroom and learning experiences through field trips and programs such as the Coleman Walk for the Cure, the different performances. So, that's really the pictures on the front, really, I think, some binds to what we do to extend education in our district that we're very proud of. So, I hope you'll like the kind of this shift in vision there of putting the kids at the forefront. As you go through here, there's lots of important information as far as our calendar events. There's even on page five, a mug of our board president in there. You're giving a speech to our kids. So, I would encourage you to take a look at all the information that's in this edition. I would like to draw your attention to page, let's see here, page 14. As you know, back in the spring, we started a process to put together a survey through OSBA. What you'll see on the right column of page 14 is our community letter of why we're doing this OSBA survey. Some of the venues that we're going to have the survey available for folks to take, one being the Bratwurst Festival at the band booth, that you'll get a dollar off for Bratwurst sandwich if you conduct the survey. Working with the band boosters on that. And you'll also be entered into a drawing for an iPod Touch. So, there'll be two incentives. The second venue, we're going to have the survey available during the district wide open houses, both at the elementary and at the secondary, and to meet the teams night that night. Basically, the incentive there is if the family shows up to the open house, they'll get a dinner ticket for a free dinner at the Commons, put on by Lori and Sodexo. Sodexo stepped up to the plate in providing the funding for that. It's no cost to the district for dinner that night. We're also going to be entered into the drawing for the iPod Touch if you complete the survey. The third and last venue for them to fill out the survey is at our first home football game on September 5th. We'll have laptops available out to football field, and we're going to ask members, community members, to take the survey. And once again, they'll get a dollar off a sandwich or a drink at the concession stands if they complete the survey. And entered into the drawing for the iPod Touch. We'll draw the iPod Touch drawing the night of the football game and announce who won that at halftime of the football game. So, really excited about the work that our folks have been doing with OSBA. With you is a sample of the survey, a staple copy of the survey. This is only going to be available online. I simply made a photocopy of the survey. That survey will also, the link will also be available on our website. It's important for folks to understand that this is no OSBA survey, so that they're, you know, they will be totally anonymous. But what we're hoping that folks do is be completely honest with us on their responses. It's not simply the school district going out seeking, yes, we're going to take the feedback from the survey, but I think folks would be more open to the comments about the importance of the education that we're providing in Cyrus City schools, you know? And there's lots of questions about ranking, you know, what's important. Is technology important, you know? How important is it? Do they strongly agree that technology is a part of the education of our students? You know, different programs that we provide. We provide college prep AP-type courses. We provide lots of vocal instrumental music opportunities, drama, and the arts. So, really what this is trying to do is gauge our community, not just our parents, our community as a whole, to get feedback. And this plays into then a more isolated, focused survey of our open roll out students, families. OSBA will be conducting those surveys through phone calls and follows to those individual families. That's really was what we started to go down, but it grew into a bigger survey of really kind of giving a feedback of our school district as a whole. So, we're very excited about the survey and the potential feedback that we're going to get from our community. And then we're really excited about focusing then at the end of this month and the next month on those open roll out families, to get feedback from that. So, any questions on the survey?
I appreciate all the work that went into this, holding the actual group meetings and refining it down.
And, you know, the paper copy doesn't do it justice, so what I encourage, I sent everybody an email this afternoon. Go to that link and pop open, it's a real nice, it's a real format, and you just, you know, simply click the buttons, and it does provide some feedback opportunities. But very exciting, and like I said, none of this has been possible without Chris, his leadership in working through this, the smoke signals and the survey. So, excited about those opportunities. The last piece, if you look on the back page of the smoke signals, this is the advertisement for our open house, district wide open house. The elementary is open from 5:00 to 6:30 that evening. Secondary open from 6:00 to 7:30. The dinner being provided in the Commons starting at 6:00, and then the fall meet the teams night at 7:45 out to football field. So, I would encourage everybody to attend one or all those events that evening on the 20th of August. Oh, one other item. We expanded preschool this year. I'm happy to announce that we ended last year, at the end of the year, with 60 kids in preschool. We have 71 as of today, with a potential capacity of 96. People say, well, jeez, you have 25 open spots. Believe me, the next three weeks, those will fill up. And so, I truly believe we're going to start out the school year with close to capacity in the three preschool units, which is much improvement, expansion over what we had last year with two units. So, I think that the earlier we can get those kids in our building, the more impact it's going to have on them. Do recall also that this is all made possible, I know the board was committed before we got the grant, but we got an expansion grant this year at a tune of about $38,000. That's helping offset any expenditures for expanding that preschool. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. And I don't believe anybody's here to address us. Moving on to the personnel certified staff.
President Murrah, members of boards, my recommendation to approve items A through E under the personnel certified staff section of the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Weyrath?
Yes.
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 President Murrah, members of boards, my recommendation to approve items A through G under the personnel classified section of the agenda.
Any motion? Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Sheefer?
Yes.
Ms. Weyrath?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Members of board, it's my recommendation to approve items A through N under the dissection of the agenda.
So, who? Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Weyrath?
Yes.
Mr. Sheefer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And President Murrah, members of board, we have three, four items to discuss tonight. The first one is just a consideration for the reemployment of Wendy Johnson as they retired, rehired for high school guidance counselor. If anybody has any comments regarding that, we'll set those at this time. Second item tonight, we have the 2014-15 Elementary Handbook. Those were uploaded to the database earlier this week. So, Mr. Roll is here to answer any questions. I will tell you that briefing through it, most of them were gate changes. There was some compliance changes to keep us in line with board policy, but I would not consider any major policy changes. Mr. Roll, is anything you'd like to comment on the handbook?
Yes, sir, thank you. There would be one, I don't know if you have access to it on the channel. Page 15, immunizations. And in that area, if you'll indulge me, I'll read for you. Immunizations beginning with the 2014-2015 school year, all students entering the Cyrus City School District must have proof of required vaccinations or have completed the exemption form prior to starting school as required by law. Your child, and this is in caps, your child will not be allowed to attend school without this information. This is an update where years past, we have had, and a driving factor here is the bumps and the measles and those circumstances. And this is one that was a recommendation by the Crawford County Health District, if you will. Other schools in the district have had this, I shouldn't say for a number of years, I should say, prior to us, last year, we still maintained one where students had, students had it until November 1st. Now, the thought there was, okay, get the school year off and get it going. And, you know, if folks wouldn't have the opportunity to do it before then, you have to do it by November 1st. Well, that's problematic in two areas. From the beginning of school, August until November 1st, we could have, you know, non- un-immunized students present. Again, with the bumps and measles and the recurrence of that, that was a concern. But then also, it is something that we have gotten to, and it has impacted a small number of our students in the past couple of years, where I have to remove students from school after that November 1st deadline. Some for a day or two, and some because of the inability of parents to either, I guess we'll say, get off of work or get child immunized, or a cost factor. This past year, we had a child off for 10 days. And so, right in the midst of just when they're hitting their stride, as primarily kindergarten, instructionally, we're removing them from school. And so, this has been very clearly communicated to all of our incoming preschoolers and kindergartners and any new folks coming into the district. It's just one that, I think, is one that overall, for the better welfare, health, and safety of all folks in the building, it's something that is a change. And I'll also say, with regards to immunizations, it does come back to, I tell, I talk to the kindergarten folks, and I say, well, I think I'm the oldest kid in the building because looking back at my own school records, and it's something that they look at as for the adults, I did have measles when I was young. In seventh grade, went through a time where I had to have an immunization. There is one stipulation that does not favor that, and that is if we do have a case of, a confirmed case of bumps, measles, any of the childhood, you know, things of that nature, by our Crofton County Health District, then any child who is not immunized, there go those who are, who have completed the exemption, must be removed from school for the duration of the incubation period, which is twenty-one days. And so that could be very problematic. And so right now, I will say that of the folks, you know, of this, it would be a very mi, a very small percentage of our folks do exercise that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Just as about that, and then we then provide homeschooling for those students as far as to keep up on the work if that would happen in the event of something like it maybe was.
As far, and I guess we haven't had that circumstance. Now, the thing that I would say is if they would be an identified special education student, we are required to provide them with pre-appropriate public education. But I'll say, to my knowledge, for those who are not identified, I'm not aware that we are required to do that. But that is, that is something we will look at to confirm.
Okay. Any other questions?
Many yellowed areas, majority of which are a reflection of the secondary, and that is one thing that we are striving to do, is to be consistent, prepaid, or prepaid through, well, with our policies and the [inaudible].
Next item on the discussion is the preschool handbook for this coming year. Robin Showers, our preschool coordinator, has sat down and revised this. There's still some potential support staff changes that may be made. That's why they were highlighted as far as the aids go. I will tell you that our preschool recently has earned a what's called a four-star rating through a step-up quality, which is a very rigorous process. They come in, they come in and evaluate the curriculum, the staffing qualifications, the facility, all the things that make up quality preschool. And I realize, I have now realized, preschool is a different animal. And there's quite a bit of hurdles that they need to jump through in order to just earn certification. But just earned certification wasn't good enough. Our preschool staff, through their efforts last year, earned a four-star rating. The goal for them this year to earn five-star ratings is the top rating that they can earn. And I have all the confidence in the world through Robin's leadership and the staff that they'll earn that this year. So we have to add in some, some very detailed professional development through the year in order to earn that rating. But like I said, I think that we've got the solid foundation of expansion of the preschool, and also not just expanding just ordinary preschool, but a high-quality preschool that we have, which is going to make an impact in education down the road for us. So you can, you can read through there, most of them are just changes with regards to the wording of a coordinator for preschool, but I don't think there's any earth-shattering changes with the recommendations for the handbook there for the preschool. Any questions on that? Next item, we'd like to get your feelings on a date that we can do in coordinating with principals, the building tours. I will say that probably within another week, the buildings will be cleaned and ready to be toured. I think most of the classrooms have been completed in both buildings. I think they moved to the hallways. So really, it sets your pleasure between, I would say, the week of, you know, August tenth, which is Bratwurst Festival week. I'm not available the night of the fourteenth because I'm going to grill Bratwurst for the band boosters, but, which by the way, if any of you would like to volunteer, they're looking for grillers, they have all shifts available. But...
I'm not going to be available the thirteenth, fourteenth, or fifteenth.
Obviously, the Wednesday, the twentieth, that evening's out of, out of consideration because that's the night of our open houses.
Why don't you go there all day?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that may be.
I'd ask you to maybe consider the eighteenth or nineteenth.
Eighteenth is fine with me.
It's not my birthday, but it's up there.
Yeah, reasonable. We should, we should come.
Yeah.
What a way to spend the day.
At this time, I don't have any agenda items, but I will ask for the consideration. Some do come up that we conduct this, we'll have to conduct a special board meeting because we'll have all the board members together anyhow. So I would see us having a limited number of items to take care of that night to, I think we'll have some potential red hale aids to hire that evening. So I'd ask for your consideration, allow us to have a few agenda items before the building tours. Is there a time that works best for everybody?
Anytime after six, or before me, or your [inaudible].
Start at six thirty.
We can actually start at six-thirty at the secondary building. That way, we can take care of any agenda items in the library, and then have Dr. Burke get us toward the secondary, then move to the elementary afterwards.
So on the eighteenth?
Yeah, eighteen, six-thirty.
In regards to the time, I didn't realize that school doesn't start yet, so it can be any time to the end in the early evening. If you want to do it sooner, that's fine.
Do you think practices will be done?
Well, we'll, we'll still be two days, so it'll be seven, seven to one in the morning, or seven, morning to one again. So whatever time is more appropriate.
One second. You're done at one?
Mm-hmm.
So you could go one more second.
Yeah.
You want to go at five?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's five o'clock.
Have any snow, uh, [inaudible].
I can start at four-thirty. I want to move to four-thirty if that works best for you.
Your birthday every day, sorry. Makes no difference.
Help me get out earlier from work.
That's right. You might get your plan of surprise somewhere along the way.
I'm supposed to stay.
Oh.
If I wasn't surprised, I'm supposed to know.
Four-thirty on the eighteenth?
Four-thirty on the eighteenth in the secondary library. I'll send a meeting invite right now to everybody.
All right. Four-thirty on the eighteenth, please.
Any communications? Would like to just, I covered this in my session, the back school events, Wednesday, August twelfth, the open house, and meet the teams. And would like to get your comments regarding the upcoming CAPA conference. We have, we'll have to register prior to the end of August in order to be allowed to reserve rooms. So I'd ask you to take a look at those dates and see what your [inaudible] as far as attendance and the number of days that you would be interested in.
Night through the [inaudible].
The night through the twelve. And whether or not, you know, the, last year, we went down on Sunday evening, it would be Sunday the night.
So we may have an investment update that evening.
Because that November?
Yes.
And I'm not, I, I, you know, got something in the mail about it, but like, I'm not real clear.
We would, we would take care of all the registrations, okay? And the CAPA conference typically will have some general speakers, but the most, I think the most valuable is the breakout sessions that you can, there will be board development sessions, there'll be superintendent administration sessions. It's the biggest conference that's put on, educational conference. And whatever, whatever areas that you would like to, to help with your professional development as a board member, there'll be sessions available. So it's a very good learning opportunity for folks. We will take care of the registration, take care of reserving the rooms, and we'll kind of put kind of a skeleton agenda together, but you're really free to attend what sessions that interest you. And so...
Wow, thanks. It looks better on you. Yeah. Well, I'd just like to make a comment and thank you guys for the work that you did in the last couple of weeks, shifting and shuffling personnel, bringing in. It's, it's been a whirlwind, and to keep on top of it is hard enough, let alone try to fill spots. So it's well done.
Appreciate, appreciate that. So, you know, as of, not, as of today, all positions are filled. I would say that the elementary, secretary, data entry positions are just as critical as my assistant here in this building for the elementary. And fifty...
Five.
Five applicants interviewed, ten very highly qualified individuals, and went through a rigorous process of not just an interview, but all men took online assessments. So a combination of looking at the interview, the interview team, and the online assessment, which involved general workplace knowledge and also data entry assessment, narrowed that down to two finalist candidates who had to go through an interview with superintendent. Both positions were offered and both were accepted. I will say that there's parts of our support staff bargaining agreement that tied our hands as far as number of years of experience that we can extend. Even with that being said, both top individuals accepted the positions. Limited number of experience years that could provide for them, both of them took, I would say, considerable pay cut to come work for us. So we're very fortunate to have both individuals come in with top-quality individuals coming to work for our district, which will make his life easier once we get them trained in, in, so.
If I can, would be remiss if we didn't take opportunity to thank Mrs. Hyde and Mrs. Hill for their years of dedicated service. That was part of our conversation when we went through the interview process with Mrs. Billings' retirement a year ago. We've gone from over eighty years of secretary experience, and our current staff's years of experience is actually two months, so. Well, from over eighty years to two months.
If anybody else calls or comes to the elementary tomorrow, you got the one-minute show tomorrow.
That's all right, and do your best.
Well done.
All right, I think we now need a motion to recess to executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. And I will ask for consideration, possible board action at the end of the executive session. I'm going to have the executive session. So...
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Ms. Wera?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Anybody else?
Uh, yes, please.